For roll call.
Roll call, Mayor BJ Lindsay. Mayor Portem Howe.
Here.
Councilman Humbert.
Here.
Councilman Weeks. Councilman Crane.
Here.
We have a quorum, you may proceed.
I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred and one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion to approve the agenda in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, since we're such a small group, I'm gonna ask each of you in the audience to introduce yourself because every one of you has a particular role to play here today. And sir, I remember your briefing from before and looking forward to hearing that again. So if we could start with Kevin.
I'm Kevin Riggittson, I'm the Chair of the Roads and Infrastructure.
Yes, sir.
And I'm Bob Sherwin, Santa Fe, and CEO of the Bi Technologies.
Right. Okay.
Michael Martinez, Albuquerque, Mexico, with the land's paving.
Okay.
Deliana Strickland, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Curdell, Public Works Director, Village of Angel Fire.
Alright, Bob, you're up.
Okay, thank you. So, just out of curiosity, I know you've heard it before, have you heard it as well? Who has not heard of it?
I've caught parts of it.
Parts of it. And it's first time for you, so yeah. Okay, so, I'll be brief, we have a small crowd and you can get on with your business, but Lith Technologies, we're a geotechnical company based in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And we work very closely with Los Alamos National Laboratories for six years in a row. And we've developed a technology that turns base course into concrete. So this is just standard base course. And our, our product is a powdered formulation that when mixed into it, it takes the, the foundation of the road. We have the ability to walk, to go to 1.6 million PSI and base course is 25,000. Asphalt is 500,000, so we, when we're putting an asphalt surface on it, we'll stop it at a dosage that hits 500,000 because the asphalt's been wearing it before your foundation. So, there's a saying, and here's a smaller sample that you can pass around. There's a saying in road construction that roads wear from the top, but they fail from the bottom. And when you live in an elevation like Angel Fire, especially in the springtime, you get a lot of freeze thaw cycles. And when the, when the, the sun is hitting the base course and it's warming up and then at night, it freezes, you're going through expansion and contraction cycles and the base course turns to mush. And if you have a surface on it, regardless of how thick it is, it's going to come apart. And if you have any clay underneath the road, clay can lift a building off of its foundation and we've all seen sidewalks that get raised, so it's easy to, to lift up the road. And so, if we could build roads on top of concrete, you would never have a pothole. Because potholes are formed when water gets into the asphalt, erodes away, the base course creates a cavity and then truck comes along and there's nothing to support that weight, it breaks off and you got a pothole. And so, with Lith, and, and it just would be cost prohibitive, it'd be so expensive, you know, no, we could build roads that way. With Lith Tech, that's actually what you're getting for a fraction of the price. So, for example, base course, excuse me, asphalt costs, depending where you are and you guys are remote, it's going to be more expensive, ten to fifteen dollars an inch per square yard, or two dollars an inch per square yard. So, so for eighty to eighty-five percent less money, you can achieve the strength for asphalt and then reduce your pavement design down to what a minimum a laydown machine can put down of, of two inches. So, and that's the most expensive component in building a road is your, is the asphalt component. So, we've been building roads since 2018, we started the company in 2010 as a geotechnical company. We put twenty-five million dollars into R and D with ninety-five investors to figure this out. We customize the formula for every material that we run into. So, one of, one of your big expenses here is hauling in base course and asphalt because it's remote and it's, it's expensive. You don't have to do that, we'll take whatever's there, if you have worn out base course and it's time to bring in new base course, we can take what's there and turn it into 500,000 PSI without importing anything and then putting two inches on top of it. And the roads are going to be a lot less money than if you have to bring in base course and four inches of asphalt. So, let me take you through this real quickly and give you some examples. So, in nature, the term, everybody's heard of petrified soil, but very few people, or petrified wood, but very few have heard of lithified soil, but it's the same concept over millions of years. Wood turns into stone and soil turns into stone with naturally occurring minerals. And we are using those same naturally occurring minerals, this is a completely green product, it's a zero environmentally on the SDS sheet. And, and this is our lab in Santa Fe where we've run, we've run geotechnical tests already for Clubhouse Drive, South Angel Fire, and Aspen, got off the chart numbers on all of them, they're ready to go. And I've been coming here for about two and a half years, I worked with the former administration, I took Santos Martinez and Joe Mixon and Matt Billingsley and I'm a pilot, I flew them to projects all over, they wanted to see roads that were at eight thousand feet, we went to Monticello, Utah, you can talk to Santos, they walked every inch of the road, there wasn't a crack in it and it was six years old with just chip seal at eight thousand feet and snow on the, on the road, you know, during the, during the winter months. Santos just referred us to the city of Dallas and they're doing a project next month. And so he's very familiar with, with this project, so this is just an example of what I'm already showing you, but in addition to base course, we work with Kaiser Aluminum, Rio Tinto, and we take their tailings and do the same thing with it. With Los Alamos, we've developed a cover for abandoned uranium mines. It's the first cover that's ever been developed that blocks a hundred percent of gamma radiation and radon and it's not just soil, we're lithifying iron minerals into the, into the cover. So, basically, I'm going to skip through some of these things. What would normally take a hundred and eighty-seven truckloads of gravel, that's one mile, twenty-four feet wide, six inches, we can do with seven truckloads of Lith Tech. And take what's there, so we're reducing the carbon footprint by a hundred and eighty trucks. We're reducing the asphalt by as much as three, three fourths. Eliminating potholes because there's nothing underneath there that can erode and create a cavity. And so the pavement design and water, you can put this underwater indefinitely and it's not going to come apart. Water's not going to get into it, so you will not have freeze thaw cycles, it's not going to expand and contract. And that's really the key to, to what we can offer you more than anything is you're not going to have the issues with the freeze thaw. And so, the other thing, not so much a problem here, but on your main highway, you get a lot of traffic. The two things that take roads out are insufficient load bearing capacity with all the forty-ton trucks. Every one of those, according to the DOT study, is equivalent to ten thousand automobiles. And it's a record number of forty-ton trucks on the highway. Again, we're taking base course, what's normally under the road, twenty-five thousand PSI to five hundred thousand, two thousand times stronger. So, the pavement design's going to look like the one on the right, much thinner, with a, with a thicker base that's going to be there forever, you won't ever have to mess with the base and then you just maintain your surface, which, you know, the maintenance of that is going to be very inexpensive. There's my Los Alamos update. Turn that off. So, here's the freeze thaw, normally, you're going to get freeze thaw that can expand and contract by nine to eleven percent. You eliminate that and that's what's, that's what's destroying your roads. This is the road that I took Joe Mixon and Santos to. This is in Monticello, this is five and a half years later and it only has chip seal on it. And, and on your rural roads, you don't need asphalt, you know, I know up here, snow plowing is the issue and what you need to do is just put the little skids or like one-eighth of an inch that right on the bottom of the blade, so you're skimming across the surface and you're not digging into your asphalt or chip seal. This is a road that's in Roswell and this is a, a road that's now turned six years old this month. At the top of the road on the right, it has a trucking company that's based there with five hundred forty-ton trucks that come and go every day. They said at least four fifty come and go, so it's got nine hundred to a thousand trucks a day on a chip seal surface. It had its first maintenance in April where they just put a quarter inch slurry seal, they just kind of painted over the road. So it looks like asphalt, looks brand new, but it didn't have a cracked or pothole. And that's been the equivalent of nine to ten million cars a day for six years on the chip seal surface. That's unheard of, we, we've had people fly here from India to see that road. So, again, this is your normal section of a road, base course at five hundred thousand, excuse me, asphalt base course at twenty-five, the subgrade can be whatever Mother Nature put there and normally, they just put, you know, asphalt keeps getting thicker and thicker. What we do, and this is an old number, a lot of people tell me it's closer to fifteen dollars a square yard per inch, we're still, we're still two dollars a square yard per inch, including shipping to get it here. So, very inexpensive way to give you a long-lasting road. This is Arizona DOT District Engineer, did a white paper on this, on the left are three different pavement designs for a low-volume road, secondary road and a primary arterial, arterial route. It never gets over two inches, no matter how busy the road is, where traditional designs are getting up to six and a half inches of, of asphalt and, and the rural roads just chip seal. So, when a road gets to the end of its life and you've got some examples of this, you know, South Angel Fires in horrible condition and it has huge potholes, which tells you it's failing from the bottom. If you do a mill and fill or a mill and overlay, which is the top pitcher, to just mill off the asphalt and put it back on, it'll be exactly like it is now in two or three years because whatever is causing it to fail is under the, not underneath the road and you're not touching that, you're just putting a cosmetic Band-Aid on the surface. What we do is the bottom pitcher, we go in and do a permanent fix by going down eight inches, take all the asphalt, get into the base course and fix that whole eight-inch section. So now it's the equivalent of eight inches of asphalt before you're putting the asphalt on it and you can just put two inches, now you have the equivalent of ten inches and you've got a long-term solution. This is just describing what I was saying, as I mentioned, we're a geotechnical company that we've already done this on three of your roads where we came out and pulled samples of, of all the material, took it to the lab, customized it and did a California bearing ratio and confined compressive strength, we tested after it's been underwater for four days for the strength, get resilient modulus, plasticity index, the soil classification and make sure that it's not going to erode away, it's bound and non-dispersive. And then you get a, a report like this. And Kurt has, has your reports, this one is one we did for New Mexico DOT. It just shows you the untreated went from a thirty PSI to a thousand PSI and Californian bearing ratio from a twenty-two to five hundred and sixteen. These are not doubles or triples, this is huge jumps in strength and, and frankly unprecedented numbers, we're the only company, the only product that's ever made it through ASHTO is the national testing for geotechnical, they have three phases, nobody's made it through the first phase. We're the first company to make it through all phases of their testing. We also have text audit approval, it's the hardest DOT to get, their annual budget's thirty-seven billion, only product they've ever approved. Also just got FEMA approval. And for, for the Mora and San Miguel, Lith Tech is going into the design of those roads. So, this is the process of, of a recliner going in and pulverizing the road. Hard to see, but the stripes are under the road, that's an asphalt road, the orange hose is hooked onto a water truck. After it grinds up the road, then a cement spreader truck puts down our, our product. It's a gray powder, it looks like cement, it's lighter in color, lighter in weight. And then the recliner goes through it a second time, making sure that there's nothing larger than one and a half inch minus and gets a good blend and then our Geotecs are there to make sure that we're right at optimum moisture content and getting the density and compaction readings. The sheep's foot gets all the initial compaction. The grater puts the crown in the road and shapes it, the flat wheel roller finishes it off. And then it's ready for a surface. And this is an example of a chip seal surface. And this is one we did for Blue Diamond Almonds in Northern California before and after. They were going to, they had to get a haul road, that's a twenty-year haul road to have three point one million ESOS, that's a design that stands for equivalent single axle loads because it's all heavy haul trucks. Took five, it would require five inches of asphalt, ten inches of base course and we did chip seal with eight inches of Lith Tech and hit five point four million ESOS instead of three point one and it was a sixty percent savings. So, here's the installation process in one minute. This is a road we did for New Mexico DOT in Santa Rosa and also I took Joe Mixon was here to see this road going in. They were condensed and they were going to do all their roads going forward and then she was going to be elected and someone was kind of starting over and trying to get everybody into speed. So the wire truck is hooked onto the recliner, injecting water, blending in the Lith Tech at optimal moisture content, eight inches deep. And then we're there taking readings to make sure that we're right at optimum moisture content. We do all the geotechnical before, during and after, it's all included in our price. We don't want a failure more than you don't want to go. And then after the sheep's foot gets the compaction in, then the grater shaves off the dentals, hits your crown. And all that material that's getting swept off can go into your ditches and they can compact that with the rear tire of the grater and armor your ditches so that they hold. And now they're putting down two inches of asphalt instead of what was going to be four. And again, another savings because the asphalt is the most expensive component and we're always reducing that. I mentioned we got Texas deal pre- DOT approval, we got ASHTO approval, FEMA approval. All of our white papers are out of Los Alamos, well documented. There's a television series every Saturday on CNBC called Advancements TV, they look for the biggest advancement in any technology. And with the one point two trillion dollar infrastructure bill, we were the only company selected and for two of our technologies for our roads and our abandoned uranium mines, I won't take the time to show you that, it's on our website. I was trying to keep it brief, so I'll leave it at that and see if anybody has any questions.
Kevin, anything?
I mean, just, I mean, probably just stuff that you've already been over with people too, around guarantees and that kind of stuff and those kinds of stuff is what I'd be interested in. Yeah, so we matched the asphalt warranty. As far as maintaining, say, utilities underneath it. Sugar, water, that kind of stuff, is that a problem getting in? You, you treat it just like asphalt, you sock it, pull it out, take that material out. When we do the project, we can always leave you with extra product for patching and things like that, so if you have to do a utility cut, the material you take out, you just mix with the powder and water and optimum moisture content's really when it's just starting to form in your hand, it's not crumbling and falling apart or something, not even getting, you know, pumping right at that density and then you just pack it back in and it will re-solidify and you don't get those sags in your utility cuts. Please, Jeff.
Good afternoon, Mayor Portem Howe, Councilor Crane, Councilor Humbert. Thank you, Bob, for your presentation. I'd like to share with you some observations I had on a recent trip to Bogosa Springs, Colorado. An area that is very parallel to our climate. Very easy to see, they very, more often than not have, they're at the same temperature as us, same snowfall amounts, same type of terrain, same types of vegetation, everything. I looked at a mile of road that was done with the Lithified Technologies product, and it was in complete failure in its third year. Observations that I had was, I'll go through the list and I have the, I, I asked a lot of questions when first hearing about this or seeing this presentation in regards to, for example, how the, how the treated edges of the road react. This was the point where I saw the most common failure. I was at the edge of the Lith Tech product, product. Now, did have chip seal on it. There were areas where the chip seal obviously had been compromised. And this can happen due to, you know, a number of things, snow removal could definitely have an effect. The initial subgrade not being flattened or crowned properly and so forth and so on. If it was an issue with a rounded crown, meaning that each lane should crown from the center to the outside, if it's rounded, would have seen a significant number of failures in the center of the lane. Majority of the failures that I, that I witnessed were either in the center of the road, more so on the edges of the road. Another thing that I had asked about is how this material transitions into other type of road materials, concrete, asphalt, raw base course and saw failures at each of these intersecting points. Okay. Now, as far as the material being impermeable to, to water, areas where potholes were visible in the road where chip seal had been removed, the treated material underneath was eroded away in some places at depth of four inches. So the Lith, Lith Tech product did erode. And on this site visit, arrived at the roads shortly after a rain. And if the material was impermeable to water, logic would say those potholes would be full of water. They weren't. They were moist and showed multiple cracks in the product. Now, I wouldn't observe this road prior to speaking with anybody from Archuleta County. I wanted to make my own, my own observation without any bias whatsoever. And a member of my team went with me as well. You know, a few things that I, that I want to bring up and one of the opinions that I've had from the get-go and essentially what, what we had there is the two lanes were treated with Lith Tech product underneath them. And the shoulders or four slopes or none of that, none of the rest of the road profile was treated. So there was a change in elevation from the road to the raw base course on the side of a few inches in some places. The other thing that, that I, I noticed and it, it just really stood out to me. I've always, I've had, have concerns with, with any product you're going to put on the road, whether it's pavement, this or just raw base course in areas where you have transitioned from shady to sunny areas. And how the road moves and how it's going to stay together. I observed a spot in the road where there was a lone bushy ponderosa pine that winter shade was literally the perfect silhouette of this tree within the road showed a failure in the road. Okay, so that tells me that the product doesn't hold up well to the freeze thaw cycles. One, it was obviously permeable to water, obvious cracking. And on the edges, it was breaking off, okay? Now, I, I know questions could be raised, how the application was done. As Mr. Sherwin mentioned, when they do a project, they have quality control there the whole time. And I understand that this, this, this project in Bogosa may have been used by somebody as a comparison in cost savings. That paving a million dollars a mile and this process half a million dollars a mile. Okay, when I did get the opportunity to speak with the engineering department in Archuleta County, they mentioned they did the work in-house. Which maybe it's easy to say that they did it wrong, but here again, and they confirmed there was quality control on site the whole time. The biggest thing that stood out for me and the discussion that we do a mill and fill that the pavement is going to fail within two to three years. There was one transition point where this method merged with an area that had been done with milling fill. The milling fill was two to three years older and it still looked great. Where this product was in full failure. I have pictures that I'd be willing to share with y'all individually, I didn't feel it would be appropriate to bring those pictures up in this public meeting. But I did have to share my observations. And had a very long visit with the engineering department from Archuleta County. And this road went into failure in less than a year. Okay. So, I just want to say that I, I know, you know, Mr. Sherwin, you know, Bob had mentioned that he wanted to have the opportunity to do this presentation so y'all could make an informed decision. I did my, my best short of going and looking at any of these roads to give you the best information you could to make an informed decision, not only to counsel, but the Streets and Infrastructure Committee as well. If, if that is the true goal of this, to make sure you have all the information to make an informed decision. I'm here to inform you that in our area, in our environment, I will never feel comfortable with using this product.
Thank you. I would like to respond.
Please, please.
Would you? Yes. Thank you. I'm going to stand sideways so I can look at you. Apparently, you don't recall our first meeting when I told you that with Bogosa Springs, when they installed it, they installed it with a worn-out mow board. The mow board is what goes underneath the grater, it's the blade, when it's worn out, it's got a crown in. And so, when they installed the road with a worn-out mow board, each lane had a crown in it. So when they replaced the crown, and I, and I had this conversation with you in the very beginning, when they replaced the crown and I would call Bob Perry, he's the Public Works Director, is now retired, but he was the one that was there at the time and Gabe Martinez with GM Emulsion also was there during the inspection. He's the one that figured out that it was a worn, worn-out mow board because he laid a two-by-four across the lane and it, and you could do this with the two-by-four, it was crowned in each lane. So when in winter time came with a new mow board and they have a lot of freeze thaw cycles, so they get two or three inches of ice and they put the grater on it to cut the ice, they just scalped the whole top of each lane, which just compromised the Lith Tech because now you just broke up the whole structure with a, with a grater that cut through both sides of the road.
But I thought the Lith Tech was its own structure and that it would.
A grater can tear it up and that's why I've said during, during snow plowing, you want to put the skids on it and you want to skim the surface, if you want to draw a blade into it, you can rip it up and that's exactly what they did. And they, they acknowledged that they were the ones that created the failure. We've never had another road that's ever failed and that was completely because of cutting the ice and talked to Bob Perry, he's the Public Works Director.
Was.
Was, he retired right after this project. And, but he's the one that, I was there with Gabe. Gabe said this, this was caused and that's why you got a crown in each road, I would have never known that. And that they just scalped off both lanes when they, with a, with a grater.
As I mentioned before, if, and, and what he says is very logical and very possible, okay? You know, for one, that's something that should have been identified with quality control. But again, if that was the sole reason of failure, your failure in your chip seal would be in the center of the lane, not in the center of the road and not on the edge of the road. And I asked the question about if there was benefit to, instead of doing the snow removal Instead of doing the snow removal with a motor grader, doing it with a plow on skids. They attempted that. And what they ended up with. In the spring was a mile of road with six to eight inches of ice on it. All the other roads were melted and free. And if. It is felt that uh. By the former Public Works Director. That it was an error on their part. Why would they, I would have to ask the question, why would they not be willing? To redo it with this product? And. There were comments made. By them that question, one of your, the, the, the question, one of your concerns, Kevin. About uh. What happens if there's a failure? What happens if you have to cut into the road? Okay? Uh, when the failure was identified. And they were told that they would be provided with material that they could mix themselves and put in place. They have not been able to receive that. I don't know why, I don't know, but thi- this is again, just what they said. And uh. You know. I, there's, there's uh, too much about this that makes me nervous, because all of the. Points that have been stressed about why this should be utilized. Over re- regular paving. And that it doesn't fail in this way, and it doesn't fail in that way. I saw those failures. In multiple sections of these roads. And for what it's worth, there, you know, there was an error on one slot, once, one slide. That the current rate per inch for asphalt, for the two inch cap that we need to do, is fifteen dollars a square yard. As per New Mexico statewide pricing agreement, right now. So I think there's some costs that are understated. In this presentation. And in reality, when it comes down to treating the full road profile. Verifying everything. E- e- expense is not the big separator. Between asphalt and this product. And. Then, yeah, it can be said that this product is stronger than asphalt. May not be a good thing. The road may not move right. It may not expand and contract the way it should be, in areas of transition between shade and sunlight. Uh, it was, all of the questions that I've had. About this product since the first time I seen it prevented. Or presented, uh. I saw. Failures in those areas. From the edges, as I said, from the transitions with other materials. And there are places where. It is, again, transitioning with. The mill and field process. And the pavement looks in a lot better shape. And. I don't mean this in a derogatory way. But in the presentation, what was shown on those roads is the before picture. When the road was all messed up and potholed. Road in Bagosa Springs looked worse than that.
My last, last comment, uh. When you run a grader and you tear up the middle of the road in both lanes, you've just destroyed everything we put in. You give it no chance. If you don't take the product and extend it beyond the pavement surface and treat. The shoulders, as I've talked to you about on, on the roads here. Then the water can undermine it. They didn't have the budget to go beyond the edge of the road and do the shoulders. These were, these were installation error and a after the, the fact error. And I think it's really unfair. Uh, that you use that with one project that you've seen without all, look, all the studies and all the other roads we've done. And I, and from the very first time I met you, I said, here's one exception. And I told you this story. For you to invite me up here to present and then, and then do that is just, you know, that's, I find that really interesting, but um. Anyway, I appreciate your time.
Well, Bob, my apologies, I'm not the one that invited you.
Um, actually, you were.
Right, I'll show you the email. Um, now. One concern, you know, as I mentioned before. In order for this to be viable, I saw that the, the full road profile needed to be treated and cleaning the edges. Uh, I know I was conveyed at one time when this material was treated, there's no dust, so forth and so on. Uh, there was a period of time of about a week and a half. When the material was treated prior to it being chip sealed. And uh, it was not only. Extremely dusty. To where it brought about complaints from the public. Uh, but it was a very fine gray dust. Like Oregon concrete is what they described it as. Um. I'm sure that this product can do wonderful things. In other climates, I'm just not confident with it in ours. And when the day comes where. It is New Mexico DOT approved. Then I think I would be more willing to look at it. Because Texas DOT. Uh, probably the. They don't, it's just a different climate. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment that uh, chip seal is not your best. Bet for this, this climate. So with the. Lith tech product. And actual pavement. Is really where you're going to get your. Your quality. Out of it. And long lasting. So I, I. I'm against chip seal. Chip seal is gravel avoid.
Okay. I think we can all agree, and I think, I guess Bob didn't convey to you, we will, I don't. Think as long as any of us are around, chip seal will never be done or need to fire again. It has always failed up here, no matter what the subgrade is.
I have a question, alright, um. And, and I appreciate the comments of both. I, I don't think we intended to get into a, a contest here, but um. It, it, obviously, there are some concerns, um, you know, justified, however, we're going to get to that. If, if there was an area. Um, that we could use as a test bed uh, for this. Um, I know that's more expensive from a mobilization cost perspective to do a smaller project as opposed to. Anytime you can spool up, you know, GM Emulsion or somebody, the more you can go, the, the better your per mile is. I- i- is there something that we could consider building a? Perfect test case scenario, if you will, um, and forgive me for mixing technical terms here, but. Not untreated the edges or, or, or gi- giving it the best chance possible, um. I, I'm, I'm thinking of the road to Allen Fields, so, some of the other things that. You know, we know we're going to have to get to eventually, and we're, we're never going to be able to settle this argument for. This versus Bagosa versus Santa Rosa versus whatever, but a half mile of this as done. Exactly as specified, is there an area we might consider? Doing a test case uh, and, and taking the guesswork out of it?
Uh, we have talked about that, and I know there was a commitment by the, the prior administration to do just that. Um, and uh. I do need to add that in the uh, original design for what could have potentially been done last fall. That in that design, it was only treatment of the lane widths, it didn't include the whole lane structure, but anyway. Had that, that was the uh, the same question that Roads Committee had when we discussed uh, the decision for South Angel Fire Road. And uh. They brought up a couple of uh, good potential options. Uh, as a test area. Uh, obviously, if we want to see something, if it really does hold up, we want it in a high traffic area. That has all the elements that we think could compromise this material. Then the question leads into if it's a failure, then what?
I, I agree, a hundred percent, and I think that would speak to the size of the test case. In other words, when I talk about a five mile test case here, we're talking about some. Large enough with enough traffic, with enough shade, with enough ditch transition from this material to that material. I'm sure we can find a uh. Suboptimal area to, to put this in pretty easily. But I guess is there? A way to work with the Roads Committee to make sure, because what I don't want to do is ask you to. Go to a spec that, that paints you into a corner, in other words, where you're providing just this and then skipping the apron, or something that's going to. You know, potentially lead to one of the, the failures that we want to avoid, so. Kevin, I think you get your hand up back there.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, we do have a huge difference in our climate. Just in, uh, even from the top of the, the roads, from the top of the mound down here, elevation difference, those kind of things. I don't think we're ever going to find something that fits. One hundred percent everywhere. So maybe this product isn't good for some of the higher elevations, or the upside damage, or the shades, and all that kind of stuff. But there are plenty of roads out here that they might, that might work better already. So that's something to think about, some of these roads down here in the valleys, instead of up on the hill and stuff, so. I'd actually like to have your worst case scenario. And we know when we come out of the lab that it works.
Well, and I guess that's.
Properly, it's going to work.
But that's what I'm, I'm asking, because I'm, I'm stuck between, obviously, you know, needing to listen and take the advice from a public works director. But I'm also rooting for you, because we got a lot of roads that need a lot of help, uh, a- and, and if we could find something that would help. I think we'd be a great customer for you.
Tested clubhouse drive, that was the intent, to do a half mile that had a lot of traffic on it. Uh, we've done all the geotechnical, we have not been paid. But we've been here numerous times and um. And I, and, and this gentleman is right, that when you, I'm not a proponent of chip seal.
Sure.
Especially when you have snow removal. And uh, if you put asphalt two inches, you don't ever need more. Uh, and put it up against one that's four inches and watch what happens. And put a shoulder in it so it can drain. But when you take a grader and you cut off the top of it, um, you just compromise the whole road, and that has nothing to do with the product.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but, but grading roads are a fact of life for us up here and, and. Um, the, the, the skill and attentiveness of that road grader does vary a little day to day, no, no offense intended. Um, so. That, that's, I guess what I would like to see is if we can find. A stretcher road, uh, and I don't know if clubhouse drive is even still an option, Kevin, that'd be something we'd have to talk to the.
No, it's not, because we just received TPF funding to repave that next spring.
Yeah, so is there? A secondary site we can look at, a- a- and, and, you know, make sure that we're. Not necessarily working to our standard spec, but whatever we would need to do to, to try to give this the best shot possible. The ditches, the edges, the transitions, all of that, so. Um. Whatever that road needs to be, I think. If we were going to find it, the test cases, the only way I could see us. We would have to do that necessarily, I think, before we could move forward on a larger scale project.
So you're, you're advocating for some, I just, yeah, sure, we can talk about this more if, if we go down that route of some kind of test, testing your test beds, because. I just think one road somewhere isn't going to be indicative of all our conditions, maybe two or three sore sections. Cover a range of those conditions, and then see how it all develops. That's why.
That would be the heaviest traffic.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you so much, Bob. So Rocky, how long do we need to transition to the next item?
We're ready.
We're ready.
Yeah. We're ready now.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is the presentation from Civic Plus.
Mayor Potem How, Councilor's Manager Ware. Says taking on the clerk position here at the village, um. Manager Ware has tasked me with a project to move the village into a paperless system, which you might have heard, okay? And so moving to paperless, uh, not only involves converting all of the paper records to digital, but. It, it also involves in identifying our workflows for how our, how paper is going to be generated going forward and. Looking at software that can help streamline those, those workflows, while at the same time minimizing the production of paper documents. The village has many departments that will have a variety of workflows, and one of those workflows that is very near and dear to my heart. Of course, is the clerk workflow. And uh, how I manage agendas, minutes, packets. Uh, supporting documentation, resolutions, ordinances, contracts and such. Tammy McTendon and I have been actively looking at vendors who can provide software and services to help. Get our human resource files as a start, as a priority. Uh, to a paperless system, and one of the vendors uh, that we've looked at is Civic Plus. And uh, who are going to present and demonstrate a software called Civic Plus Select. This software will help the clerk decide the workflow, not all the workflows necessarily, they have another product for that, but. The demonstration today will focus on the clerk workflow uh, to move towards more of a paperless system. And so. Of course, uh, with all this, this will also affect of how you all uh, coordinate your meetings and such. And so without uh, listening to me anymore, uh, on Zoom, uh, we have Gabby. And we have Raquel, and we have Javier from Civic Plus, who'll be providing us the presentation today, so. There you go.
Thank you so much, Rocky, and thank you. Board members, it is an honor to be able to speak with you today. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. I just had technical issues earlier today, so I want to, I want to make sure that it's all aligned. But thank you so much for your time. So I am one of our account executives here, and Javier is as well. Rochelle Cantaro is my solutions engineer. And she has a very soft spot in her heart for all of you, but I'm not going to steal too much of that thunder. So what we propose is that we show you what your environment can look like. If you so choose. And then we can show you some public examples, and then we'll open the floor up for questions. Feel free to ask any, we can deviate at any point. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Sure.
Alright, so Rochelle is going to go ahead and show you that, what we call the board portal and the public portal, and I'll let her take it away.
Thanks so much, Gabby. Um, hello, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Rochelle Cantaro. I'm a solutions engineer here at Civic Plus. But prior to coming over here to Civic Plus, I spent seventeen years in local governments. Several years as a deputy clerk in a small town in Illinois, and like Rocky, my agenda creation process was also very manual. Full of lots of paper, so I'm excited to show you what uh, Civic Plus can do to help you go paperless. I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen here. So not only with, with Civic Plus Select, will you be able to, staff will be able to enjoy creating agendas and packets. In a completely digital format, they can also upload their supporting documents within the system. And administer their approval processes right here within the system. So that for you, Mayor and Council. They deliver you a fully digital agenda and packet. Within Civic Plus Select, there is a board portal, so we made this part of the system specifically for mayor. And councils and board members across the nation. And when an agenda and packet is ready for your review, you will sign in to your board portal. Using your favorite device and favorite browser, and here is an electronic version of your agenda and packet. Within the board portal, you're able to. Go into and review any agenda item. And examine those documents in a digital format. Like for example, um, I drafted. A uh, staff recommendation report, and for you, Mayor and Council, you can go into your system. And make annotations directly on these documents, you can even add extra notes like this. So you're able to take notes directly on the document and also make notes right here in the notes box. It's marked private because you can't see each other's notes. You can't talk to each other using the board portal, and you can't talk to village staff using the board portal. And right here within board portal is how you'll be accessing your meeting materials. Another great feature of our board portal is this is how Rocky will be keeping you up to date. As you're progressing through a meeting, so you will use it before a meeting, and you will also use it during a meeting. Within Civic Plus Select, we have our live meeting management program, and within the board portal, you're. Able to roll yourselves in before a meeting. You can mark yourselves as president voting, president not voting, what. You can mark yourselves as president voting, president not voting, whatever the case may be. And again, you will have access to an electronic of your agenda. Within this solution, we also have these display pages that can be made available for you. So this is gonna keep your in-person audience updated of how Rocky has progressed through the meeting. And within the system, Rocky can go ahead and call up speakers and mark motions and votes right here within the system. So let's say that during a meeting, you would have Gabby speak to you as a, you know, as a, as, as a staff member or as a community member. And within that public display, one, one second here. Within that public display, you can have um via that speaker timer. Excuse me. You can have that speaker timer display as you have speakers making comments on any of your agenda items. So it kinda looked like this. So let's say I was making a comment on this item. I can see how much speaking time I have using the public display. And in the board portal, you as mayor and council, you also have uh access to how much speaking time I have. So let's say that I'm making great points, but you wanna see all of the supporting documents that Rocky had previously made available to you. And you can do that right here in your board portal by clicking on the details page. And you can review any of those supporting documents and also review any notes that you have previously made for yourself. Within the system, we can also keep track of motions and votes. And there is a way for Rocky to empower all of you to vote on a particular item via your board portal. When it comes time for you to cast a vote, um, Rocky can go ahead and enable electronic voting and you would get this prompt right here in your board portal and you can make your decisions and cast a vote right here in the board portal. Alternatively, Rocky can also pass votes on your behalf within the system. And once all of the votes have been tallied, you can have something like this display for your viewing audience. So that is the experience for you as elected officials within board portal. Within Civic Plus Select, you will also get a public portal. And I will show you a live city example. Uh, we're over here at the city of Green Bay. And this is not an alliance to a favorite sports team, mayor and council. This is just an example, right? I'm originally from, from Chicago, so you know that I can't be a, a, a Green Bay fan. Um, so they use us for their website, as does the village, and also uses us for agenda and meeting management system. So this is how this kind of all comes together for your public. So you saw how it comes together for you. This is how it comes together for the public. As a member of the public, I can go through the public portal, scroll up and down to look for meetings. I can also specify a meeting body that I wanna explore a little bit further. And I can also do a keyword search. Once I find a meeting that I wanna explore a little bit further, I can click on it. And within the public portal, I can take a look at the agenda and the packet in my favorite browser. It's also available to me via download in PDF and plain text. The plain text is there for your ADA audience. If I'm gonna go through this document using a screen reader, I'm gonna do that quickly and effectively in plain text. In the public portal, you also get an HTML version of your agenda. Again, a service to your ADA audience. And let us know if you like this. Within the HTML agenda, motions and votes information can be readily available to the public even before minutes are approved. So this is just increases transparency with your community. We know that the village is present on uh YouTube. We have a great integration with YouTube, but you can also use our public portal to livestream and host all of your meeting videos on demand. I'll go ahead and press play there. Within our Civic Plus Select Public Portal, your community members can enjoy timestamped video. So if I am a member of the public and I don't wanna see these parts of the meeting, I wanna go straight to the report of the protection policy committee. I'll just click on that timestamp and that video is forwarded straight to that spot in the meeting. As I'm going through the agenda and packet, I can have the video playing for me as I'm going through the documents. I can resize it, go full screen if I need to. And those timestamps do follow me around, or I can simply close out if I need to. As a member of the public, I can sign up for account, an account and then sign in. And I can share this meeting with my friends and my family via email straight from the public portal. So if there was something on the agenda that means a lot to me, or if I'm watching the video and something exciting really happens, I can forward all of that information to my friends and my family straight from the public portal. So mayor and council, Rocky had me uh put together a short presentation on board portal and public portal. I'll open it up to any questions you may have or any features you might wanna see a little bit further.
Uh, Rochelle, this is Rocky. Um, I, I would like to you to explain a little bit, if you have a demo, that'd be great. Um, how information gets to me in a workflow uh prior to the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So let's say I am a village staff member and Rocky has already created this agenda for uh, for me to place my items in. And as a staff member, I will click this create item button. I will select an agenda section for my item to go. So if I were entering a consent agenda item, I'll pick that. If it's an old business item, I'll pick that. If it's a new business item, I'll make that determination here and name my item. I'll also categorize my item and this category list is completely customizable to the village. The department will automatically populate based on user profile, but Rocky being super user can add items on behalf of other departments as well. And then click create item. In this window, this is where staff would be creating that staff recommendation document. Um, I believe mayor and council, this is where you would read a background and facts and alternatives, maybe a financial impact and review. This is where that document is gonna be created right here within the system. Instead of be as a staff member walking in that document to Rocky or scanning in documents and emailing it to him or handing paper copies of supporting documents, I'm gonna upload all of them within the system. By clicking this add attachments, I can upload documents. I can use integrations with Google Drive and OneDrive. And I can also assign confidentiality to my documents. So non-confidential means this document can go forward facing to the public, but maybe um, this is going to be an executive session item. And the document should only be visible to mayor and council. I can make that determination here as well. And by clicking on this green cloud to upload those documents, I can upload Word documents, Excel, Excel spreadsheets, PowerPoint presentations, um, PDFs, RTF files, JPGs and PNG, so all kinds of photo files right here. Again, I'm not printing those out. We are gonna go paperless with this system. I am not gonna be handing them to Rocky. I'm not gonna be emailing it to Rocky. I'm uploading all of that information right here within the system. And one, another great thing here, and I, I love this, being a, a former clerk, is staff can also facilitate their approval processes within the system. So let's say an item like this going in front of my council, I need to have these four staff members take a look at this item for consideration. So we will template out your approval processes for you. Um, within Civic Plus Select, however, a super user like Rocky can make changes to the approval processes by adding and deleting approvers as needed. So staff can come in here, enter their items, make sure that the specific and uh appropriate staff members get to li- take a look at the item. And Rocky, all the while, can facilitate oversight on, over all of those processes. So the super user, he is able to see how the agenda is shaping up and how far along the approval process um this item has progressed. As you can see here for the purchase of Civic Plus Select, that's gone through a hundred percent of the workflow there. But this one right here, our new item, has only gone through fifty percent of the workflow. And we know that now Andy has it for review and approval. So Rocky, for you, if it comes time to, you know, you're coming up on that deadline to post that agenda and packet right here within the system, you know exactly who might be holding up an item. And you can also message that staff member within the system to nudge them through the workflow so that you're very, very timely on your agenda and packet posting. So everything is digital and we do mean for the system to be from beginning to end, anything meeting related. All of those actions are performed within Civic Plus Select.
Rochelle, can, can we, uh, can I um lock submissions, say, three, four, or five days before the meeting?
Yes, absolutely. You can lock down packets and items. Um, you can implement a cutoff date and time. And that's just gonna motivate staff to be timely in their item additions um when it comes to an upcoming meeting.
So uh, under this system, would we move to um sending out a complete pack up with the agenda at the time the agenda goes out?
That is absolutely a uh, an option. So Rocky can post uh to the board portal first. Um, and then to the, the public portal. So that's an option.
Or it can build as you saw, as you saw here.
It's, so my question is, is there an app so that this can be accessed over a phone?
Uh, there is no app. However, the board portal is completely mobile responsive. Um, so this is what it looks like on my demo side, but if you were to access this via your phone, um, you're still gonna get a really, really good end user experience. Um, so this is what it looks like on an iPhone. Um, twelve and eleven, and this is what it would look like on your iPad.
And, and does that require uh cellular cert, having uh Wi-Fi service or will it work over cellular?
Uh, it will work over cellular. Yes. You just need to have a secure web connection to access it, whether it's cellular or Wi-Fi.
Do you have other municipalities in New Mexico you work with?
Yeah, and Gabby can send a list of municipalities in New Mexico.
Yes, I am happy to.
Is, are you guys part of a, a buying cooperative or one of the other exchanges that we utilize for purchasing things at state level or are these all individual contracts?
That's a good question. I don't know if we're a buying cooperative, but you do have an agreement with us already. Your website is hosted by us as a company, so it would just be a joint part of that existing contract, if that makes sense. We would just marry the two together.
And um, is this something that we would be? Because right now, the way our process works for generating agendas, particularly for the committees, are we talking about putting committee members on this as well?
That is at your discretion. It is unlimited boards, unlimited users and unlimited storage. So you have the capacity. By no means do you have to if you don't feel comfortable, but you're more than welcome to.
Is, a- and forgive me, we run into this, our IT company. Is there a per user license then? Because the last time we ran into a problem with our IT company, that their solution was to have us spend twenty-three dollars for every single committee member every single month, which was a brilliant solution on their part, I thought. So uh, is, is that how this works or is thi- this is not a per user fee?
Nope. It is a flat software cost that I believe has been presented to you. If not, I'm happy to share that. And it is just as is.
Those are my questions.
Yeah.
I do on the um employee side, but they're just doing it right now.
I assume they will be doing, if we purchase it, they will be doing the training customized for either employees, council.
Yes. So I have great news for you. We provide council training. So that means that you're gonna have a live virtual trainer, just like Rochelle and I. And they will go ahead and they will devote as much time as you need. So let's say one of you happens to go ahead and has a wedding anniversary. And so you're not able to make the meeting. No worries. We'll go ahead and give you that extra training for free. We'll also provide all staff training and post implementation. So once you're live with the software, staff has free quarterly training that they can utilize at any point. So that if they wish, they can go ahead and put in a request and ask a, a person, but you also have twenty-four seven, three sixty-five tech support with someone live who only specializes in this software and all those trainings are recorded.
One of the cool things that I like about it that we didn't talk about is when I'm doing minutes, I'm over here writing and I'm trying to write as best as I can and I'm not listening sometimes. Well, I can type a lot faster than I can write. So um, there's, there's a function where you could have, you know, display what's going on on on, on, on the Zoom, but I can have another screen over here and be typing my minutes as I go, which I can't do now.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That was very, very nice presentation.
Thank you for your time.
All righty. We'll talk again.
Okay.
Bye bye.
Thank you.